All right, it is now one o'clock, so we will go ahead and begin the zoning board appeals and call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Al Kafaji. Commissioner Rue.
Here.
Commissioner Cannon.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons. Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Geraldo.
Here.
Chairman Russo.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda will be the approval of the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes. Any discussions, any revisions?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes made by Commissioner Cannon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rue. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right, the minutes have been approved. And a few housekeeping items before we get into regular business. And this goes for all of us, even the commissioners. Anybody with a cellphone, please turn your cellphone off or put it on vibrate so as to not disturb the proceeding. If for some reason you need to take a call, please leave the chamber before doing so. We only take testimony at the podium, so if you are going to be speaking today, please go to that podium, give us your name and address and speak clearly into the microphone. Once we close a hearing on a particular matter and go into deliberations, we typically will not provide another opportunity for you to present your case. So please, if you're presenting your case, get everything out there, all the pertinent information while you're up at the podium before we go into deliberation. And then finally, for those speaking, please keep your remarks on point and address the specific issues and try not to be repetitive or redundant on your points. Certainly, if we have questions or certain things we need to hit on, we'll ask you the questions. So with that, we will go to the first item on regular business, that is ZBA two one seven six dash two zero two four. And I'll turn it over to staff to read it. Yeah, oh, sorry, swearing in the witnesses, one item I forgot, thank you. Those of you who are going to be speaking today, you'll be sworn in now. Thank you, Josh, for the reminder. It's right on my list, it was right there, I went right past it, so thank you for that. So with that said, we are now on ZBA two one seven six dash two zero two four, and I'll turn it over to staff to read the case into the record.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Case number ZBA two one six dash twenty twenty-four. It's a public hearing on the request of Sean Renaud of Austin Engineering Company Incorporated on behalf of John and Gretchen Petracas to obtain minor variances from the City of Peoria Unified Development Code, Section five point four point six fences and walls to increase the height of a wall in the rear yard from six feet to eight feet, to increase the height of a wall in the side yard from six feet to nine feet, and to increase the height of a wall in the front yard from three feet to four feet in a Class R two single-family residential district for a property located at five nine zero three, five nine zero seven, and five nine one seven North Sherwood Avenue with parcel identification numbers fourteen seventeen four zero three zero one two, fourteen seventeen four zero three zero one one, and fourteen seventeen four zero three zero one zero. So this request is actually a second or a return back to this board. They made the same request in November twenty twenty-two and was granted approval with the same condition that's noted in today's request. They were granted approval for these same wall heights across these properties. They're back this afternoon because that prior approval essentially has expired. The walls were not constructed within two years of the previous approval. So they're back seeking the same variances. So again, we're reviewing it new, but I just want to provide that background. The property is in our R two zoning classification, is noted in green here on our zoning map. That's the same zoning on, you know, on adjacent properties in the same subdivision. And then other surrounding zoning, we have R three and R six across University Street. So these properties are under one ownership, three different parcels. The southmost parcel is five nine zero three, it is developed with a house, a single-family home there. The two northern lots are currently vacant, this photo is outdated, they're vacant lots right now. These lots front Sherwood Avenue, so their front yard, as it pertains to our request, is along Sherwood. In the space between this building line, the wall of the building, and the road is considered the front yard. And then the lots are through lots backing up to University Street, so we are considering the rear yard, as it pertains to our request, to be the yard along University Street. And then back here is also kind of a side rear yard area. And then on the north end of the three parcels, we were considering that a side yard between adjacent lots. I'll pull up the site plan and then we'll get into the parts of their requests. Zoom just doesn't quite want to work with me today. Okay, so the petitioner provided this site plan that kind of color codes the different wall heights. I'm trying to scroll and capture everything here. So this is the north, the north, northern most yard, the side yard that we're reviewing. University here is over on your left-hand side, Sherwood, the front yard along here. So we have the different colors denoted. Along the rear yard, I have, I'm describing that as Request A. The ordinance allows six-foot height, they're asking for up to eight feet tall in that blue, the darker blue. And that's for the length along University. And then over in this corner area here. And then in the north yard, we have variations in diversity, they're asking for the wall heights to improve privacy, safety, you know, reduce some of that traffic noise. The petitioner also identifies some fences nearby on University Street and Northmore Avenue that are taller than the ordinance maximum. And there are some photos provided of those walls in your packet here. And then specifically when it comes to the north side yard and that extra nine feet, they're asking for that additional foot over the eight-foot for, to, as leeway for construction as they design and build the wall over the drainage way that's in the backyard. So that's why there's some of the pink in their site plan. So the subdivision has a drainage way that goes back here through that lower, you know, graded area. And then the additional extra height is requested right there. And then Request C in the front yard, their application identifies that part of their design is to have a buffer with a little bit of a birmingham and some trees would be planted. And they're noting that the perspective from the road would make the wall appear to be three-foot when you're at the road versus where the wall is, however ordinance measures from the grade of the wall. So that's why we would define it as a four-foot tall wall and needing the variance. So I'll go over our standards for a minor variance, so each of these requests, the different yards, they're all minor variances based on the allowance for that yard. The takeaway is our development review board does not object to Request A or B. That's the rear yard along University or the side yard on the north property line for those wall heights as proposed. Our recommendation is to deny the request for the front yard wall height variance. Our recommendation does come with a condition, and this is the same condition that was part of the prior case. And the condition is that the rear and side yard would be designed by an engineer licensed in the state of Illinois. Additional design and certification by said individual shall demonstrate that the proposed wall will not negatively impact the public sewer. The wall shall not restrict the flow or ponding capacity of stormwater in any way, and hydraulic calculations will be required if any changes to the current stormwater system. So that condition is directly related to the drainage way, stormwater utilities in that vicinity. So I'll summarize our findings. There are five findings for minor variances and highlighted each based on their requests. And so our findings for A and B align with each other. Again, that's for the rear yard wall height up to eight feet and then the north property line with the, in the side yard. So the first standard is the plight of the owners due to unique circumstances. We agree on Request A and B that there are unique circumstances as identified by the topography, the double frontage with a minor arterial road on University Avenue and the high traffic volume. For Request C in that front yard, we don't find that the circumstances are unique, that the design is more of a, of a, an ask to avoid an inconvenience in designing their final proposal rather than a hardship. Number two, the variation if granted will not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the public or other properties. For Request A and B, we find that is true, that it will not alter the essential character or be injurious to the public based on other walls that, heights that we, that were identified. And then with the condition regarding the design to make sure that the project is not injurious to the public or other properties. Number C, or the front yard wall, however, we do not find that the standard is true and that the wall would alter the essential character there being no other front walls in the immediate vicinity, so right around these properties. Number three, the proposed variance represents the minimum deviation necessary to accomplish the improvement. For A and B, we find that to be true. The eight-foot tall wall along University, according to the petitioner, there are some elements of pedestrian scale for that eight-foot height maximum. And then on the nine-foot height, they're asking for that extra foot in the north wall just where the construction might require more than eight feet. So those are arguments to support, this is a minimum deviation. But in the front yard, we don't find that to be true. A front yard or a pool barrier does need to be four feet, as they kind of show here, there's a pool. Pool barrier does need to be four feet, but because this is new construction, we don't find that that there isn't an alternative for them to be able to still provide their requirement. Number four, the conditions of the variance are not self-created. A and B, true, again with that, the slope drainage way being present, the double frontage, those things are not self-created. And then in the C, however, in the front yard, we do think that their placement for a wall in the front yard is, you know, a choice here given the new construction on these two lots. And then number five, the granting of the variance will result in a public benefit to the surrounding neighborhood and the city as a whole. We do think that can be true with the wall along University and the side yard based on the material and the aesthetic that they're proposing. And we do think it would promote a sense of security and privacy in the area. And then in the front yard, we don't find the standard to be true. Our reasoning is, is it, is the request is more of a design ask rather than something based on a hardship where they need the wall to be above the three-foot allowance. Okay, so that's the summary of staff's review for this request.
Thank you for that. Any questions? And I'll ask a question, and you may have said it, I apologize if I missed it. The previously granted variance, was it the exact same request?
Yes.
I thought you'd said that, I wanted to make sure. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. If the petitioner would now like to come to the podium? Good afternoon. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Sean Renaud, three zero, three zero three Sullivan Circle, Chairman Town Hills, Illinois.
All right, great. Please proceed.
Thanks for having me. I'm here representing John and Gretchen Petracas. They wanted me to apologize, they were not at this meeting. And they wanted me to thank everybody for putting their time and effort into reviewing their property improvements. And Carolyn, thank you very much for that synopsis, makes my job and time in front of this microphone very easy, I think, for the most part. I think one of the things that I want to just, just kind of sort of highlight was this case has been through the system prior, previously, and was approved. We did, one thing that is not included in the packet today, that was previously included, was some signatures of residents within the neighborhood. I think it was around twenty-four, oh, I guess it is included, sorry. Around twenty-four individual homes were visited and a letter was signed. We did not, in full transparency, repeat that exercise because I think we've been, this has been on the schedule for almost two months now. We had no residents come and object to this case going through the process again. So, but those signatures, we look at them as good into perpetuity, so to speak. Just some of the hardships we'd like to emphasize again. Really, what brought us to this point is we're trying to develop a residential lot, and I think in a subdivision that was developed or designed, use that term loosely, over fifty years ago. So we all know, nothing against any developers, but sometimes lots don't get the TLC. There's always a few that, you know, are hard to build on, and there's always hidden surprises. There is a storm sewer encroachment of the cities on the property. You've got several other utility easements on these lots that really limit your building footprint in developing what we would call traditional yard space. So you take that equation and try to put in, developing, you know, a pool, we run into the forty-eight-inch barrier issue in the front yard. So one of the reasons wanting to kind of develop the forty-eight-inch foot wall would be to come back, to do a three-foot and come back later, we would have to do a forty-eight-inch fence or do some kind of decorative fencing on top of the wall, all very costly in this day and age. And the owner feels like we're already dealing with quite a lot of hardships, I guess is the word we're trying to seek sympathy from with that front wall. And ultimately, I feel like it's in the city's best interest, I think the homeowner is very interested in working with the city to clean up some of these easements and the stormwater issues. I know I spoke to Public Works and together, I think we discovered that almost thirty-eight acres come drain through those lots, both north through south, and then they go underneath University and find their way out through Northwoods Mall in that corridor along seventy-four, eventually find their way out to the Illinois River. So I think working, it's in good interest for all of us to work together and try to compromise. And, you know, personally doing this for several years now, you know, we're asking for six inches, so to speak, on that front wall. So with that, I don't see anything else highlighted that I need to bore you with. I'm happy to answer any technical questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Questions?
I have a question. No, I'm still a little confused about the front wall, the four-foot request, because a pool requires four feet, is that right?
Correct.
And that's what this would be, would be, or is there another fence behind that or another barrier behind it?
There's a sheet, diagram, a section, it's a rough, but it is to scale, it's not the prettiest thing. One of these previous sheets that shows the relationship to the crown of the road might be down further. There's a better one than that, is it a sequential sheet? I'm sorry, I know I saw that in there, one second, it might be, oh, here we go, yeah, there we go, that's a section. So this is, this is, there's no vertical exaggeration here at all, this is pretty straightforward, two-scale drawing of kind of, that's your wall right there, essentially, to the left. Set back from the property line, it meets all other zoning requirements except for asking for that six-inch increase. So on the, on the John Petracas's side of the property, he would, the wall would read, you know, as forty-eight inches. On the other side of the property, adjacent to the wall, per code, it would be forty inches too, but if you notice, we're kind of birmingham it up. So from the road, from the pedestrian's perspective, the wall would appear not to be four feet. I don't know how high it would appear, but you definitely wouldn't, you know, we're trying to set the landscape up in that way, and we're also
I get that part of it, you don't have to, the question was, does the four-foot, is that accomplishing the goal of a requirement for a pool?
Yes, sir.
Is, or is there another behind the wall to the left of that where the pool's going to be?
No.
Is there another four-foot, you know, okay, so you basically need the four feet for the pool?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry for the long-winded response.
Any other, any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak on this case? All right, seeing none, do the commissioners have any other questions of staff or the petitioner now that he's sat down before we go into deliberations? All right, well, in that case, we will go ahead and close the hearing and go into deliberations. Discussion before we get into the findings of fact?
Well, I think because of the, for them to have a pool, they basically have to have that four-foot fence, so, I mean, and given also that from the street, you know, the topography there, the way he's going to burr that up, it'll look like three feet. I, I'm going to be supportive of that, and I think it, and the rest of it, because of the utilities and the easements and the slope of the land, which, which our, the city's already recommended approval on that, I support that too.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons.
I agree, there could be worse choices that would be compliant for that front yard fence. The proposal looks well-done and makes sense to me, I think it fits the
Thank you, Commissioner Cannon. Any other discussion? All right, I'm going to try to fix your microphones real fast before we start doing findings of fact, because some are flashing. All right. Well, we, in essence, have three separate requests here, so I have one finding of fact sheet, but I'm going to go through each of the three requests on this finding of fact sheet, so we'll see where we end up on the findings of fact, and then we can decide what kind of motion we look like, whether we're combining all three or whether we do each one at a time. So let's start off with what's being called Request A, which is the rear yard wall height going from six feet to eight feet. That is a request for a minor variance, so the following five criteria must be true in order for the variance to be granted. So criteria number one, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. True or false, Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
And I also find it to be true. Criteria number two, the variation if granted will not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the public or other property or properties. True or false, Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it to be true. Criteria number three, the proposed variance represents the minimum deviation from the standards necessary to accomplish the desired improvement. True or false, Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it to be true. Number four, the conditions of the variances requested are not self-created. True or false, Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it to be true. Number five, the granting of the variance will result in a public benefit to the surrounding neighborhood and the city as a whole. The public benefit may include but is not limited to preservation or enhancement of desirable site characteristics or natural features or historic resources, design that enhances the surrounding area, economic development which may enhance the local economy, or efficient use of land as it relates to surrounding structures and services. Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it to be true. All right. Request number two, or excuse me, Request B, that is the side yard wall height going from six feet to nine feet. Again, a request for a minor variance, all five criteria must be true. Number one, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it to be true. Number two, the variance if granted will not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the public or other property or properties. Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it to be true. The proposed variance for number three represents the minimum deviation from the standards necessary to accomplish the desired improvement. Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it to be true. The conditions of the variance requested are not self-created. Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it to be true. I'm not gonna read number five in its entirety again. I'll simply say the granting of the variance will result in a public benefit to the surrounding neighborhood and the city as a whole. Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it to be true. Request C, front yard, the height going from three feet to four feet. Again, a request for a minor variance. All five criteria must be true. Number one, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it true. Number two, the variance if granted will not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the public or other property or properties. Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it true. Number three, the proposed variance represents the minimum deviation from the standards necessary to accomplish the desired improvement. Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it true. Number four, the conditions of the variance requested are not self-created. Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it true. Number five, the granting of the variance will result in a public benefit to the surrounding neighborhood and the city as a whole. Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it to be true. So, um, for all three requests, the findings of fact are that the five criteria have been met. Um, so I think we, we could probably bundle these into one, one motion based on that finding. Do I, do I have a motion?
Was there a condition with the engineering that we needed to add to all three of those or one of those?
The first two.
It is A and B. Okay.
Yeah, I think the, the issue probably would, we just apply the conditions to, really the issue is we comply the conditions, all three or just to the first two. Obviously, the city didn't take the position that we should apply conditions to C because the city's position was we should not approve-
Right.
-C. So we can ask for clarification before we take, take a motion from the city. Uh, if the zoning board was going to approve Request C, which is the, uh, front yard, is the request for the conditions the same as you have for A and B?
The condition would just apply to, uh, A and B because of the height and location of those particular walls.
Right. Thank you for that clarification. All right.
I'd hate to apply that condition then to the front just because it'd be an unnecessary expense for them.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's, yeah, the city's not asking for it. So I guess we obviously apply whatever conditions we want, but they're asking for A and B. So we, we can be clear on that motion too, that that's what we're looking for in the condition. So anybody wanna, anybody wanna venture to, to make a-
I'll make a motion to approve all three variance requests with the first two, A and B, uh, adding the city's guidance on engineering.
So motion to approve all three requested variances with the city's requested conditions as to items A and B?
That works. That sounds better.
All right. That motion has been made by Commissioner Cannon. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Al Kafaji? Commissioner Rue?
Aye.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Yes.
Chairman Russo?
Yes.
So the, the motion carries. Uh, congratulations. Best of luck, um, with the development. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is ZBA Case 39-2025. I'll turn it over to Josh to present for the city.
Just give me a moment. I'll get to that. There it is. Okay, this is a, a request for a public hearing, uh, for Mary Cave of Fairgram Engineering on behalf of Caterpillar Incorporated to obtain a major variance from the City Peoria Unified Development Code, Section 5.4.6(c) fence height, to increase the allowed fence height from three feet to six feet in a front yard in a Class CG general commercial district for the property located at five, five hundred and one Southwest Jefferson Avenue, parcel identification number eighteen, zero-nine, one-eighty, zero-one-eight. This property in question here, it's approximately twenty-one point two-two acres in size. Uh, it is currently zoned CG. The surrounding zoning, uh, to the north, south, and west is B1. Uh, to the, I'm sorry, east, excuse me. To the west, it's industrial zoning. It's a classification I1. And there's also some additional CG to the north. It's developed with an existing Caterpillar corporate office at the moment. These are requests for front yard fences, uh, on the property, you know, as noted, uh, in red here, this is the subject property. They wish to, uh, fence the north parking area here and also the western parking area. So fencing is proposed along John Glenn Jr. Avenue and Second Avenue for parking, this is called Parking Lot A. And then also along High Tower Street, uh, both of these are for security reasons. Uh, this is Parking Lot C. And the applicant's provided some drawings, um, as an overall view. And also included in the packet, uh, there's a dashed line along these areas that show the proposed fencing, uh, which would enclose the, the parking areas. Staff's recommendation for this request is no objection with request of the findings. The property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in that zoning district. Staff notes that while the property can yield a reasonable return without a variance, the applicant is unable to, to create these adequately secured areas while the same time adhering to fence regulations. Two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Staff notes that the property is unique. Uh, it is, it has front yards along each street frontage for this property, so it doesn't really have a, a rear yard to enjoy that allow, additional height allowance. Number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter, alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the public or other property or properties. This proposal will, will not alter the essential character due to the proposed, proposed fence installation being similar to Dozer Park, uh, across Southwest Jefferson. Certainly happy to go through any of these other attachments here. There's some more, uh, you know, closer views of, of the proposed fencing on, this is Parking Lot A again to the north, and then C to the west. And then some details of the proposed fence, uh, and also a turnstile, uh, which would be along Parking Lot A in this general vicinity here. So if there's any questions from the commission, I can answer those now.
Any questions? Thank you, Josh.
Sure.
All right. The petitioner would like to step forward, please? Good afternoon. If you could please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, I'm Mary Cave with Fairgram Engineering, one-fourty East Washington Street in East Peoria. Um, and as I said, I'm with Fairgram. I also have Tanya Smith with Caterpillar. Uh, Josh explained it very well. Um, the employee parking in lots A and C have been having some security issues, both people approaching employees throughout the day, before work, after work, et cetera. And then also people walking through the parking lots. Um, I told Tanya I've done the same thing. Bradley, Birmingham Games, but, um, people walking through there, um, not just trying to get to Civic Center, but trying to find open cars and, um, possible theft issues. So the, uh, six-foot fence would provide, um, anyone from jumping over, over a three-foot fence. The fence would look similar to the wrought iron style that's just across the street. So it would match, uh, the characteristics of that area, just be a little bit taller. Um, I'm happy to answer any, answer any questions, and Tanya is here as well.
Any, any questions? Thank you very much. That was easy. Thank you. Does, does anybody else wish to, to speak on this matter?
Commissioner Russo?
I'm employed by Caterpillar, so I'd like to abstain from this vote.
Duly noted. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Any further discussion, any other questions before we close the deliberations for the findings of fact? All right. We will close the hearing here and go into deliberations. Any discussion before we get into the findings of fact?
I'll miss the shortcut.
You'll miss the shortcut? You're, you're, you're one of, you're one of the offenders? Your microphone was turned off, so nobody heard you, so that's good.
That's all right.
Yeah, I'm not sure why the microphones keep shutting off, but, yeah, I mean, my, my two cents are this is pretty straightforward, safety issue. Uh, I think a lot of us have probably have gone to events at the ballpark across the street and have used the parking facilities. And it's important to have that as an option for people attending the, the events and obviously for Caterpillar employees as well. So I'm, I'm certainly supportive of the idea. So we'll, we'll go into findings of fact and see where that takes us. All right. So this is a request for a, a major variance. So the following three criteria must be true in order for a variance to be granted. Number one is the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in that zoning district. Commissioner Lyons?
True.
And Commissioner Thomas, I will call on you just, just simply abstain for the record. So Commissioner Thomas? Abstain?
Do I say abstain?
Yeah, just say abstain, yeah.
Abstain.
Sorry. That was unclear. Uh, Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it to be true. Okay. Number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas is abstaining. I'll just save you the trouble. Since he's abstained to all of these. Uh, Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it to be true. Number three, the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the public or other property or properties. Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas is abstaining. Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
And I also find it to be true. So the three criteria have been met. Um, any discussion before we go into a motion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the variance request as requested.
All right. Motion to approve requested variance by Commissioner Cannon. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rue. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rue?
Yes.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Abstain.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Yes.
Chairman Russo?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you guys coming here today. Best of luck with the project. Thank you. Okay. The next case in regular business is ZBA forty-four dash two-zero-two-five. It looks like Josh is reading this one in the record as well.
This is a public hearing on the request of Jack Barris of Pack Bars LLC on behalf of Paul Barris to obtain major variances from the City Peoria Unified Development Code, Section eight point three, point nine, point A nine, prohibited signs to allow a wall off-premises sign, Section eight point three, ten, C two H, off-premises sign, to allow for the placement of an off-premises sign on a street designated as a minor arterial per the official thoroughfare map of the City of Peoria, and Section eight-three, ten, C two I two, off-premises sign, to allow the establishment of an off-premises sign without removing one from the inventory in a Class B one central business district for the property located at six hundred Southwest Jefferson Avenue, parcel identification number eighteen, zero-nine, three-twenty-eight, zero-zero-nine. This property is right next door to our previous property, uh, located as the red enclosed polygon on the zoning map there. Subject property is point four-seven acres in size. It's zoned B one, central business district, and is surrounded by that same classification in all directions except towards the north, which is CG general commercial district. The subject property is currently developed, it's a corner lot currently developed with a commercial building. And this is the aerial photo of the property in question. And then I'll get to... The, uh, petitioner has placed a twenty by ten, uh, two-hundred square foot Jackson Adams sign on the rear building wall of the property located at six hundred Southwest Jefferson, also commonly known as the Born Paint Building. Uh, but the petitioner states that this property is the headquarters for Pack Bars LLC doing business at Jackson Adams. The petitioner is requesting, uh, major variances as noted previously. The request, uh, as far as the staff's review for the development review board, staff's recommendation is denial of the variance requests due to lack of hardship. The sign type is a prohibited type, and the applicant does not, uh, own another off-premises sign to remove as required by the code. For the findings, number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in that zoning district. Staff believes this is false. The property can continue to be used as a commercial property with the existing commercial building, and on-premises signs are permitted with proper permits. Jefferson Avenue is currently designated as a minor arterial road, which is designated, well, I'm sorry, which is, uh, designed to accommodate and provide safety for all intermodal users. The designation aligns with I dot nomenclature and the revised specifications for public streets that have been taken place since two thousand and two, as well as with the adoption of the complete streets policy by the City Peoria in two thousand and fifteen. The reclassification to align the, with I dot nomenclature permits the city to be eligible for state and federal funds to assist with the cost of road maintenance and erosion control that would otherwise be unavailable. The adoption of the complete streets policy directs new and existing streets to be designed and operated to enable safe access for all users, in that pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and public transportation users of all ages and abilities can safely move- of all ages and abilities can safely move along and across the street. Jefferson Avenue is currently undergoing modifications that serve multimodal transportation versus auto-dominated transportation. Large signs such as off-premises signs do not positively serve roads accommodating multimodal transportation. Number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Staff believe that's false. The site is not unique. The code for newly proposed off-premises freestanding signs has been consistently applied throughout the City Peoria since the text amendment passed in two thousand and nineteen. This code states that off-premises signs shall only be permitted on streets designated as principal arterial and on the official thoroughfare map of the City Peoria. Number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the public or other properties or property. Staff believes that is false. The proposal will alter the essential character due to providing development that is not code compliant while having the physical characteristics to comply. Jefferson Avenue is in the process of moving toward functioning as a multimodal street, and again, away from an auto-dominated type. So the granting of this variance will alter the essential character of the minor arterial designation and will be injurious to the public. Off-premises signs are appropriately allowed, appropriately allowed on principal arterial roads, which are designed for medium to high-traffic volume and primarily serve vehicles. Off-premises signs are not appropriate for minor arterial roads such as Jefferson Avenue, which are designed for medium traffic volumes that serve vehicles, bicyclists, public transportation, and pedestrians. Additionally, this is the second variance request to place an off-premises sign on a street that is not designated as a principal arterial. Granting this variance would set precedence for all future off-premises sign requests in addition to allowing a prohibited sign, because it's a wall sign, and one that was installed without proper permits. The first request, as noted to the ZBA, was, was in, was along University Street, to Corner University and, and Northmore. So with that, I'll... Take back to the sign-in question. And if there are any questions from the commission, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions?
So when you say it does not serve positively, the, the, I guess I just have an understa- A hard time understanding, does it, does it lose that classification as what I dot considers that street because that sign is on that building?
This, so off-premises signs, if you were to add a new one today, it would have to be a freestanding nature because this type of off-premise sign is strictly prohibited. It's in our prohibited section. In addition to...
The wall, you mean?
The wall, yes. This, this type of sign, yeah, is a wall off-premise sign. Because Jackson Adams is addressed as one oh seven Southwest Adams Street. That's where you go to get those things. You know, if you wanted to get a drink, get a pizza, you'd go to, and you wanted Jackson Adams, you'd go to, to this address, one oh seven Southwest Adams Street. You wouldn't go to this property. This is why it classifies this as off-premises signs, right? So if you were to, to, in the current code, if you want to put in a new one, one issue is it's got to be on a principal arterial on our thoroughfare map, which Jefferson is not. So, and then two, per the variance request from the applicant, you'd have to take down an existing sign somewhere in the inventory because we've capped the total number of off-premises signs within the City of Peoria altogether. So th- these are the same finding responses that were provided to the University Street application as well.
And that was, that was a completely different type of, yeah, that was a, that was a freestanding electric billboard.
But an off-premises sign as well.
I understand. Okay.
Hang on, guys. Yeah, one at a time. Do you, do you, do you want any follow-up? Commissioner Cannon, before the, Commissioner Lyons?
Yeah, I just was, I, I, I understand. I think you answered my question. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Lyons?
I guess is the only off-premise sign that is allowed is basically a billboard now?
Correct. Yeah, off-premise, in our code, in prohibited signs, it notes that off-premises stacked, off-premises wall billboards are prohibited in the City of Peoria. So if you're going to do one, it's got to be one that's similar in, in, in situation as the one on University that was proposed. As a freestanding monopole, whether you do it in a digital LED or a regular static sign is up to you on that part.
Yeah, but my recollection on University was, and, and why I know I voted against it was because some neighbors were objecting to it. It wasn't, I don't remember anything about it, taking one out of inventory somewhere. And then I think there was also this, the, the, the streets, is this, Safe Streets or, what do they call that?
These, these, yeah, these are, in essence, similar to...
The policy, but I think when they changed it, they basically prohibited signs is, is what they did unintentionally, I think, because they were trying to promote the Safe Streets, but...
There are still locations within the City Peoria that allow for off-premise signs today.
And I'm curious, if, if North University and also Jefferson are not primary arterial streets, what is? I mean, those are busy, those are busy streets, and I'm just...
Yeah, they're, they're not designated as, as principal arterials.
Okay.
Right. These are minor arterial roads. And as you know, Jefferson's currently going from a one-way to two-way condition to, to help with multimodal travel as well.
It's just, I guess, surprising to me that that's not a designated more, whatever the word that you use. I'm sorry. I'm good. It's what, streets busy enough to get that designation?
Just to clarify, is this sign, is there any safety hazard associated with it the way it's currently on the building?
We don't know that. There was no permit applied for this, this sign. So we don't know how it was constructed, how it was attached to the building, et cetera. So I couldn't answer that question.
The, go ahead.
Commissioner Rue, go ahead.
The, the Born Paint Company sign? That sign is, is good because that is where Born Paint Company operates?
It's on-premises, correct. Yes. Yep. And if you'd like, I can go through the definition of what is considered on-premise versus on, off-premise.
Sure.
So an on-premise sign is defined as a sign located in non-residential districts that identifies or advertises a business, person, activity, good, product, or service located in the zoning lot where the sign is installed and maintained. Off-premises signs, a freestanding sign or billboard that advertises goods, products, services, or facilities, or directs persons to a location different from where the sign is installed. So that's the terminology that's being provided here in, in this memo and in the code.
And I, I'm sorry. I've asked a lot of questions, so go ahead. All right. I, I assume the intent of this, and I'm sure the petitioner will talk about it when he comes up, was to face the ballpark. Is this sign overly visible from any other place other than if you're sitting and watching baseball?
You can, you can view it from the street?
Like standing on the street, because when I, I mean, there's so much construction and, you know, when I, when I drove around, like when I was coming down... Washington? Adams? Whatever. I couldn't see, I couldn't see that sign from where I was driving, but I was also trying not to, you know, run into anything. I mean, you can see the Born Paint side. I just didn't know.
I don't know if you can answer this or not.
I could, I can answer that. You can see the sign from the street right here through Google Street.
Right there. Okay.
So it is visible from the street, from the right-of-way. This is a two-way street at this section of Jefferson Avenue. So it meets the definition of an off-premises sign.
Commissioner Lyons, did you have another question or comment?
You reference in here that has been consistently applied since past in two thousand and nineteen. Basically, my question is, have there been any new ones approved in that timeframe?
Yeah, there was one on Glen Avenue that was approved.
So Glen is designated as a...
Principal, Principal Arterial Street, yeah, coming off of War Memorial Drive. That's correct.
But basically, one in the last six years, I guess, one new sign's been, been approved, to your knowledge.
Which, yes, and we've applied it consistently. That's correct.
Other questions? I'm assuming the Benjamin Moore sign next to the Born sign is because Born sells Benjamin Moore products. Do we know when the, the Jack sign was put up?
So for the timeline... Apologies, sorry. We received a complaint on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four for the request. We provided a notice to the app, to the property owner through the U.S. Post Office and through the company email. There was a compliance timeline of the thirtieth of May, twenty twenty-four, to remove the sign.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time?
I do have one. Is any change that could be made to the sign, the minimum amount, to make it permissible?
Yes. You know, as noted by the applicant, he alleges that there's an office in the building through his documentation. You know, if it changes to an advertisement for Pack Bars LLC, which has a, you know, a facility in the location, then he could advertise for Pack Bars LLC, but not for another business that's not at that location. Because in essence, it would upend how the regulations work for what's considered off-premise and on-premise hypothetically if this is approved today.
Anything else? Here, I'll ask you a question. So if it said Pack Bar LLC, that's, that's, as I understand you, you said that, that would be fine. If it said Pack Bar LLC and Jax, that would be, that would still be off-premises? All right, I think it's working.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could just offer, we're hesitant to answer any kind of questions like that because as a staff, we don't have, you know, a complete understanding of how Pack Bars LLC, the corporate structure of it. So we're not really, we don't want to appear to be giving legal advice on answering that kind of question.
Yeah, and, and thank you, and I'm certainly not asking for you guys to opine on the corporate structure. It was more like, uh, under the, under the understanding that Pack Bar has a location there and is purported to be the owner of Jax. I was just, I was just trying to ask a hypothetical about where, where does it, where does the line between premises and off-premises go, not so much the corporate structure?
And we just don't want to...
But I understand.
Misunder, okay. Thank you. I knew you would.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, petitioner, could please come to the podium? Good afternoon. If you could please state your name and address for the record?
Good afternoon. Jack Barris, one one six North Waverly, West Peoria, Illinois.
Please proceed.
As it is in our application, the State of Illinois, the Illinois Liquor Commission, banks, the Illinois Gaming Commission, all recognize our DBA. It's quite common that's recognized. In this instance, just stated, a Pack Bars sign could be hung there with no consequence. I don't understand why the City of Peoria won't have our DBA. We have our ownership and our management meetings at six hundred West Jefferson. We get all of our ma- mail there, and that is where my business partner who owns that building operates six days a week out of an office for Pack Bars and Jackson Adams there in the Born Paint Building. Our sign was hung facing the ballpark. It doesn't face any buildings. It's not a billboard. It is not directly facing Jefferson or Adams. It fits in great with Dozer Park. The City of Peoria is in the process of hanging murals right now. They just hung one above my business, Jackson Adams, down on one oh seven Southwest Adams. We are also in the process of having local artists apply for banners and boxes, which is another beautification project, I guess, that our city is putting forward. So in our economic climate downtown, it was hard to hear as someone who has invested their whole life in a downtown that, that really is dying to not be able to put something on our building that is owned, that is our headquarters, that is used every day to work on Pack Bars and Jackson Adams. Fits great. It's clean. It's professionally done. And it's like a mini Wrigley Field, if you so can call it that.
Thank you. Any, any questions?
Just one last thing.
Yeah, please.
This is where I plead to the City of Peoria, our commissions, our staff, to find ways to let local businesses try to get better, try to use the resources that they have to get their name out there a little more. And that's my, my plea to let little, little small businesses work as hard as they can to get people in their door.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do have one question. I see that it looks like a lot of old windows are blocked off with brick. Is that, is that, like, what reason is that for?
What do you mean? The windows at the Born Paint?
Yep.
Which ones?
It just, it just looks like there used to be windows present. I guess what I'm getting at is, like, if the signs were to cover a window, I'm not sure if, like, the sunlight would impact the quality of the paint, if there is paint in there. I guess is my question.
Yes, I don't, I'm not understanding.
Okay. I guess, never mind, I guess.
That is up on the fourth floor. I, I'm, I'm not positive why those are blocked off. There's not, I don't think there's much up on the third, fourth floor.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. It's on the main level, pretty much.
So maybe what Commissioner Thomas was trying to get, so the, where the Jack sign is now, is that the floor that your business is on, or is your business on a different floor?
Well, it's on the same building. Our office is on our, what would be second level.
Okay. And is the, is the Born Paint Company's business on the first and second floor?
First and second. I mean, the whole building is together. You go in and it's, you're all on, there's storage up there. I have restaurant equipment that I keep up there.
Does that, does that answer your question, Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, thank you.
And until that was a two-way, or until they're making that into a two-way, you would have never seen that side of the building driving, right? When it was just a one-way going...
Right. You'd be headed south, and you would not see that before.
Before, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I do have another question for this, for the city.
All right, give me one second. Does anybody else want to speak on this matter? All right. Please, Commissioner Cannon?
But you said there was a complaint. Was there any, any public feedback, or I didn't, I didn't see anything in the packet?
As far as for a notice or anything like that? No, we did not receive any, any contacts or anything like that.
Trigger was by someone. When you said, when you were talking about, you got somebody filed a complaint about...
A citizen complaint.
Okay. But it doesn't have anything to do with this case today. It was, they didn't write a letter for us or anything?
That's just how we came about the, the violation. That's just how we came about the violation.
Thank you, that was all.
Yep.
Didn't know if I missed them.
I didn't, I didn't see any statements in the file, one way or the other.
No, no, no responses from surrounding property owners or anything like that. I do have some documentation here to rebut some of the items that were provided by the applicant as well.
Okay, wait, please, go ahead.
So Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So no, no, you're welcome to, yeah.
And John, just for the record, are we gonna, are we making the LLC, the Articles Organization?
Exhibit one, sure. Noting on the limited liability acts to go towards the request or the allegation that, you know, there's the office there, and the reports note the same address as provided by Mr. Barris for Pack Bars LLC is 116 North Waverly Avenue in 2021, 2022, 2023, and it did not change to 317 Walnut Street, which would be the side street here between Adams and Jefferson. I believe that's where the front door is for Bourne Paint is located. It didn't change until January 28th, 2025 for that location, which was after our initial complaint notification. And then also, you know, the applicant has multiple avenues to advertise, as all do, all, you know, small businesses within the City of Peoria, to advertise within the city. You know, there is radio, television, social media. Yeah, the current GPSD has the ability to put advertisements now within the right of way there, and also the US Post Office. And I just bring to your attention the social media locations for Jackson Adams, and all the addresses for that property are 107 Southwest Adams Street as well. And then to Commissioner Cannon, as far as the visibility of the, of the sign with respect to the, when it was only one way, there, there's still a sidewalk along here, so it's still visible to pedestrians in both directions as well, just to highlight the, the multimodal not, item for that street there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any questions of the city relating to either the new evidence or anything else? All right, yeah, I was, you're next on my list. If you want to come back up to the podium, we'll give you a chance to, to speak to the information that was just provided to us. Let me get your microphone going. There you go.
When, when I went to my first meeting, we had already changed, and I showed Mr. Navin and a coworker on the State of Illinois. I brought in a piece of mail and went to the Illinois Secretary of State website, and our address had already been changed. Last week, we got a letter from the State of Illinois that said it all went through. It has been on their website since probably the beginning of May, because we did this in our plan to expand and have more than one location. So we won't have our meetings in office at one of our restaurants. It will stay 317 Walnut, which is the only entrance to this building, is on 317 Walnut. Just to make that clear.
Thank you. Any, any other questions of petitioner, or at least all right. Anything else before we close the hearing, go into deliberations? And you want to add, Josh, or you?
Nope.
All right.
Good, thank you.
Okay, we will then
I do have something, I guess.
All right, go ahead.
I, I guess I'm sympathetic to, to the applicant. In, in the, at least five years I've been on here, I've always tried to figure out, is, is this, I, I, we want to support small, small businesses here. And if it's not really harming anybody, what can we do to help, help small businesses? He, he's got a business in a part of town where we want more retail and more restaurants. The, the, the complete streets or the policy, it's directly in that neighborhood, the warehouse district. To make that successful, we need to have more retail in that area. And here, there's a, a relationship in terms of where that location is, they have their office. It clearly is where they have their office. And this is a way for them to advertise and hopefully help our complete streets goals and benefit small business. So I guess with regard to, to me, this is an example of maybe where we have a little bit of overregulation, and what can we do to support small business? And in that regard, I'm probably gonna, I'm gonna vote to support the applicant here.
All right, do we have any other, do we have any questions or anything else before I close the hearing?
Are we in deliberations?
We're not, we're not in there yet.
Okay, all right, I'll wait till you close the hearing.
All right, all right, with that, I will go ahead and close the hearing and go into deliberations. Commissioner Cannon, do you have any comments?
I do.
All right, please, let me fix your microphone so we can, there we go.
I can't see the light. All right, there we go. I understand that the, the city's position on, on the signs not being on, on, off-premises signs, as it were, I mean, you don't want buildings anywhere turning into, you know, just revenue streams for billboard advertising. But I think that the whole, at least in my opinion, the purpose that this commission exists is to look at things on a case-by-case basis. I mean, there's, there's a handful of buildings that face that ballpark or any other kind of stadium in, in the city, if you will, so I, I think it makes sense. I think it looks good. I, I can understand and appreciate the city being, you know, saying we're setting precedent, but if we have to come in here every other month and tell somebody yes or no on it, I, I guess that's part of it. But I think that this is a completely different displayed sign than what we've considered before. So in my opinion, I think, I think it fits with the, with its surroundings and I, I guess we just have to see what happens. I mean, I think of the corner of Main and Sheridan, I think. On the, on the side of Ribbon Records, there's off-premises billboard signs installed there. They don't confuse anyone. I mean, it's about something else somewhere else, you know, and they, and I get that those probably approved, they've been there since I, you know, I was a kid, so. I, I think that, again, just to, just to say that the only thing that can have a sign on the side of that building is the paint company in there, I, I think it's a waste of space, so that's my, my thought on it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? All right. And we will do the findings of fact here. This is a request for a major variance, so that means that the following three criteria must be true in order for a variance to be granted. Number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in that zoning district. Commissioner Lyons, true or false?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it to be true. Number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. True or false, Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it true. Number three, the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the public or other property or properties. True or false, Commissioner Lyons?
True.
Commissioner Thomas?
True.
Commissioner Geraldo?
True.
Commissioner Rue?
True.
Commissioner Cannon?
True.
I also find it true. So any further discussion, or somebody have a motion they want to make?
I guess my, my only other thought on adding to a motion would just be the, it to, you do a permit after it's up? I mean, is that a thing? Because I mean, I would like to know that it's not going to fall, you know, and on someone.
Who?
Yeah, we can certainly, we have in the past had to retroactively permit
Okay.
something, so we certainly could, to do the same. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Other discussion? Anybody wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the requested variance with the condition that a permit be approved retroactively to make sure it's safe for the public.
Second. All right, so, motion to approve, request of variance with the condition that a permit be approved retroactively made by Commissioner Cannon, seconded by Commissioner Lyons. Roll call. Commissioner Rue?
Yes.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Yes.
Chairman Russo?
Yes.
Motion is approved. All right, thank you for coming. Best of luck with you. Keep your business, thank you. All right, that's the end of, of regular business, and now this is the citizen's opportunity to address the commission. Anybody wish to address the commission? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Commissioner Rue. I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cannon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All pose the same sign. All right, we're adjourned, thank you. I got some docs to be signed here. Yeah, Penn? Okay.
Oh, it's fabulous. Weather was great, especially February.
I mean, my, you can check my handwriting being terrible, but no, I, I feel like I accurately captured your
You gotta sign some stuff and then we can go.
You gotta sign some stuff and then we can go.
Yep, no, it's